For the Board of Commissioners for December 12th, 2018. I want to thank everyone for coming, especially the guests. The Northwest Regional Planning Commission Board is made up of two members from each town. The people give generously of their skills and their talents to help make our towns, region, and state a better place to live. And it's great to see most of the staff here as well. They're all very talented, they all are very dedicated, and really carry a heavy load for the region to help us be more successful. I'll go through some quick introductions. Not so quick, but what I would like to do is go around the room and have both the guests and the staff and members introduce themselves. I'm Kirk Waite from Georgia.
Katie Berto, ECO America member for NRPC.
Natalie LaRocque from Franklin, I'm Alicia's guest.
Alicia LaRocque, Fairfield.
Amanda Holland, staff.
Brad Dochev, Fairfax.
Bill Irwin, Bakersfield.
George Millidoo, Georgia.
Neil Spears, Swanton Village.
Marie Spears, Swanton.
Harold Garrett, Swanton Town.
Lori Belile, Swanton County.
Hi, Alex Lenning, I'm with the St. Albans Museum.
And I'm Kelly Wakefield, also with the museum.
I'm Chico Martin, I'm from North Hero.
Rowena Brown, Ritzford.
Terry Tatro, Alberg.
Amy Adams, staff.
Terry Carton, North Hero.
Bob Bierman, South Hero.
Sean Coleman, staff.
Maggie Noel, Highgate.
Richard Noel, Highgate.
Yvonne Dandoran, Franklin.
Ellen Morris, Grand Isle.
Barclay Morris, Grand Isle.
Leonard Sharon, Ennisburg Village.
Larry Dugan of St. Albans, a museum volunteer.
Carol Dugan, museum volunteer.
Emily Adams, staff.
Linda Blash, staff.
Shannon Turgeon, Americorista with NRPC.
Mano Farnum, South Hero.
Joe Farnum from South Hero, happy holidays, everyone.
Lori Rupel Fletcher.
Barry Peterson Fletcher.
Greta Brunswick, staff.
Catherine Dimitriak, staff.
Albo Jels, St. Albans Town.
Sylvia Jensenai Lamont.
Mary Waite, Georgia.
Taylor Newton, staff.
Thank you. As they say, there's no such thing as a free lunch, so we actually do have to do a meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. You will notice that we do not have the committee and staff reports on the agenda tonight. The intention is to try and keep the meeting a bit shorter, so they are included in the packet. Please read those and feel free to ask questions if you have any. First item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment. Also, I did forget, I would like to, I noticed that we do have some museum staff here. Thank you for opening the museum up for us, it was a pleasure to see. It's a beautiful and warm room for us to eat dinner up here, and also thank you for the dinner that's being served. First, next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 18 audit. Action item, draft enclosed. And the action we're looking for is to accept the results of the audit. Would you like to give a brief view of it?
So all of you have gotten the audit probably twice now, from November and December meeting notices. There is just two things I wanted to be sure to point out to you. The first is, as you look through the audit, you'll notice that there are no findings and no management recommendations, which means that from our auditor's perspective, our financial systems are in very good shape and would like to compliment Amy and the Finance Committee for their work in that regard. And the second thing I'll point you to is on page five of the audit. And that's an analysis of our fiscal year. So as of June 30th of 2018, for the one-year period, we ended the fiscal year in the positive of $62,000. That's about in the range where we thought we would be. We thought we might be a little bit higher, but, I mean, a little bit lower, but that's still within the range where we expected to be. So that puts us in good shape for being overall in the net positive for the last five years. You'll remember that last year we were in the negative for quite a bit, but we knew that was going to happen and we knew we'd even out over time. So we're right where we thought we should be, and so everything is looking good. And I don't know if Harold wanted to add anything as treasure? Did you want to add anything, Harold, as our treasure?
Just that on page 12, because if you look through the audit, there's actually three. On page 12, you'll see the three long-term debts, and it could be confusing if you don't really understand maybe what we've got going on here. But People's Trust Company loan has been paid off and it's now been picked up by New England Federal Credit. So there's actually not three accounts, there's only two. So looking down through and you're going, holy crap, where did we conduct another $100,000 debt? We don't have a $100,000 debt.
So I would take a motion to accept the audit report. I've got a first and a second. Is someone taking record here? Taylor is? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the municipal assessment rate. There is a Finance Committee recommendation enclosed. That recommendation is consistent with the policy that was adopted by the Board a couple of years ago. The recommended option is a 3% increase. You will see the amount that is proposed per town based on the population, and I think that when you, when you look at these, the towns get quite a bargain for the assessment that they get. I would ask for a motion and a second, and then we can open up for discussion. Motion to approve? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks for keeping me straight. Next on the agenda is the Montgomery and Bakersfield Municipal Plans. We need to do plan approval and confirmation for Bakersfield and determination of energy compliance for Montgomery and Bakersfield. I assume, Rowana, you're... Perfect. Not walk back and forth.
Okay, so for Montgomery, we're going to have three proposals that we'll want, and the first one is, or excuse me, for Montgomery is this one. We'll start out with Bakersfield, there'll be three motions. Bakersfield with the regional approval of the municipal plan is the first one. The Plan Review Committee held a public hearing on November 26th at 5:30 p.m. to hear comments on whether Bakersfield Municipal Plan should receive regional approval after deliberation. The Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Bakersfield Municipal Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive regional approval in accordance with state statute. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to regionally approve the Bakersfield Municipal Plan.
Questions? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So the next is the Bakersfield Confirmation of the Planning Program. After a public hearing and deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the town of Bakersfield be granted regional confirmation in accordance with state statute. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to confirm the town of Bakersfield's continuing planning process.
Can I get a motion? Motion, second? Bob? No, I thought you had a question. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And now, Bakersfield Determination of Energy Compliance. The Plan Review Committee held a public hearing on November 26th at 5:30 p.m. to hear comments on whether the Bakersfield Municipal Plan meets the requirements for a municipal enhanced energy plan in the 24 VSA 4352. After deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Bakersfield Municipal Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive an affirmation determination of energy compliance in accordance with the state statute. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to find that the Bakersfield Municipal Plan meets the standards for an affirmation determination of energy compliance and is in conformance with the Northwest Regional Plan.
Got a motion, Bob, second? Questions? Comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
For Montgomery, for the town of Montgomery, for the determination of energy compliance, the Planting Review Committee held a public meeting on November 26th at 5:30 p.m. to hear comments on whether the Montgomery Town Plan meets the requirements for a municipal enhanced energy plan in 24 VSA 4352. After deliberation, the Plan Review Committee hereby recommends to the Board of Regional Commissioners that the Montgomery Town Plan, as submitted and reviewed, receive affirmative determination of energy compliance in accordance with state statute. I'm now looking for a motion to find that the Montgomery Town Plan meets the standards for an affirmative determination of energy compliance and is in conformance with the Northwest Regional Plan.
Got a motion, second? Bob? Any questions or discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. I would like to thank the review committees and the staff that review these. This sounds like a very simple motion and second, but there's a lot of work that goes into making sure that each of these plans have the criteria met so that they can be affirmed. And affirmation of the planning is quite important because that then allows that town, after having that affirmation, to apply for state grants for planning purposes. So many of you knew that, some didn't.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Alex Lenning, I'm the Executive Director of the St. Albans Museum. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for all the important work that you do for our region. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity and the privilege to come speak with you this evening. And what I'd like to talk about is this idea of the St. Albans Museum becoming a museum without walls. What does that mean? Well, you're probably familiar with the museum itself and the four walls you find yourself in tonight. Some of you were able to tour through earlier this evening and see that we have two floors, about seven exhibit rooms, and two hallways worth of community and regional history. But we're also about community outreach and engagement and about really trying to bring local history, local heritage outside of this building, out into the community. And that's what I want to share with you this evening. So for those of you who aren't familiar with Sam, just to give you a brief history, we were founded in 1966 as the St. Albans Historical Society. The earliest meetings were actually held in members' homes. They would travel from, to different members' homes from month to month, sharing stories and photographs and those sorts of things. In 1971, the Franklin County Museum opened in this building. So for those of you who don't know, this was a school originally, constructed in 1861, operated as a school until 1969. We're known for educational programming, exhibits, arts and cultural performances, as well as special events. And we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with a mission of community service. So one of the things we were really excited about this past year was our brand-new exhibit called Farming Franklin County, all about the agricultural heritage of our region. So this was a brand-new exhibit that was created in 2018, was designed and installed by volunteers here at the museum. And when I say staff, that's just me, I'm the only staff member here. So of course, I'm very fortunate to have such strong volunteer support and a great board of trustees, some of whom are here tonight, actually. This was a complete room renovation for us. One of the challenges with this museum is that for many years, it was a bit static. We didn't have the capacity to rotate exhibits or to tell new stories. So we completely renovated a room from top to bottom. What I'm most proud about for Farming Franklin County is the community engagement around it. We put a call-out to local farming families, farming families, excuse me, businesses, organizations, community groups, and we said, can you help us with this? Over 60 of them responded. So all the artifacts and items that were donated, the stories that are told about maple and dairy, local businesses, and farming in our region that you saw this evening, those were contributed by community members. So that's something that we're really proud of. Various artifacts, photographs, and documents that came to us came from the community. So we felt that that was important. This year, as I mentioned, we focused on maple and dairy and kind of farm rural life. Next year, with the 100th anniversary of the St. Albans Co-op, we're going to tell that story. So for us, that was a first step in kind of going outside of our own collections, outside of this building, and trying to engage community members in telling a story. For those of you who didn't get a chance to do a tour, these are just a few photos of what the exhibit looks like. Again, this was all put together by volunteers. The second project I wanted to share with you was called Lake Lessons. So this was a STEAM program. If you're not familiar with the STEAM acronym, it's just a play on STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. It really came about because we kind of noticed there was a bit of a disconnect. There are lots of people telling stories about the ecology of the lake and the health of our watershed and those sorts of things. And of course, our job is to talk about the cultural heritage of our community, to share the stories of the working waterfront and our maritime history. We wanted to bring those together so that students would have an opportunity both to learn sort of the environmental perspective of what makes Lake Champlain unique, but also what makes St. Albans Bay in particular a really special place. For those of you who aren't kind of familiar with the history of the bay, right now you might think of the park, Bayside Restaurant, the ice cream stand, is a popular place in the summer, or recreational activities. There was a time when St. Albans Bay was known as Port Washington, so you could visit Port Washington, Vermont, this was the bay. It was a working waterfront that was just as busy in terms of industry, capacity, and goods moving through as Burlington. So shipbuilding occurred in St. Albans Bay, there were resorts and hotels, restaurants, all kinds of merchants and shops for a period in the mid-19th century into the early 20th century. And that's a story that's a bit lost to time, it's not something we're aware of. So we wanted to share that story with students. We focused on third and fourth graders. Why? Because they're already studying their history and their community as part of their curriculum. And so we were able to secure some funding, offer this free for schools. The town, St. Albans generously donated the use of Bay Park. So this was actually place-based. We were able to pay for busing to bring students from St. Albans Town Schools, St. Albans City School, and Georgia Elementary down to the lake and partner with four other area nonprofits and state agency educators to do a series of half-day, hands-on workshops. They went through five stations, learning about the health of the watershed and the water cycle, and learning about Port Washington and St. Albans Bay. And we served over 500 students and staff with this program, it was completely free for the schools. So again, this is another way that we felt we were able to harness community resources to build partnerships and cultivate relationships, where we could bring together expertise from different community groups for the benefit of our local youth and our local students. And that's something we're really proud of. So there's our volunteer team on the left, and then a group of students working on the right. You can imagine there's no better classroom for learning about the lake than being right on Lake Champlain itself. So something we're really excited about, and this was a successful first year for us. We're currently looking to secure new sources of funding so that we can expand this and offer this in additional towns, to additional schools and students, again, for free next I just want to briefly touch on some of the other outreach that we're doing here at the museum. I know I'm standing between you and the cannolis, so I want to be sensitive to that. We've really worked to increase our presence in the community and to be involved as a true community partner outside of, again, these museum walls. We sponsored, excuse me, sponsored National Night Out, which was the youth, family-friendly, safe event in Taylor Park this year. We participated for the first time in Franklin County Field Days, doing an educational booth in the 4H building. We partnered with the St. Albans Free Library to offer a monthly history and homeschool program so that we could bring the resources of the museum to homeschool families to help them access local history for their own curriculum. I was especially proud of our collaboration this year with Norwich University. If you're familiar with them at all, they have what's called the Colby Award. This is an award for military writing. Every year, they have a symposium, they bring together authors, faculty members, students, and others in the community for a two-day event. One day is on campus, the other day is what's called a staff ride. Think of it as sort of an intensive field trip, where they actually bring students to go and study something with these award-winning authors. So they came to St. Albans, the bus of Norwich cadets and students and participants in the Colby Symposium. They spent time going through the museum, they did a walking tour of Taylor Park, and they did an intensive field study of the story of the St. Albans raid. And so we were really happy to be able to participate in this unique educational opportunity with the students from Norwich. We're involved in seasonal community events. So Winter Carnival is coming up, you'll see the St. Albans Museum there. Every year, we do a haunted museum trick-or-treat as part of the Downtown Spooky Saturday event. We had over 1,000 people through our building this year, which is a lot of candy and a lot of fun. You can come, our first event of the year is our Maple Festival Open House. So it's really important for us to be part of that sort of seasonal cycle of activities, community events, family-friendly things that are going on in St. Albans. You see us at the farmer's market. For those of you who heard about Last Night coming up, this is the very first year of this new New Year's Eve event in St. Albans. We're actually doing a children's carnival and countdown. For those who are too young to stay up to midnight, they can come here and have dancing and music and games and food, and really looking forward to that. And then I was fortunate this year to be able to participate in a hands-on history course at the Community College of Vermont, which brought in students from Milton and Fairfield and other places, middle schoolers and high schoolers who are learning about opportunities for either doing college coursework while they were still in school or going on to college when they graduated from high school. And so I got to bring some artifacts and some reproductions from the museum to them and do a little bit of show and tell around what opportunities they would have to study history in college. This is my good friend Farmer Don, you may know our Board of Trustees President, Don McFeeters, down at the farmer's market for Heritage Day this year. Finally, storytelling. We really tried to ensure that we were telling some unique, important, interesting local stories. So I'm currently working on a project, an oral history of the Grateful Dead concerts at Highgate in '94 and '95. So if you were there or you have an interesting story to tell, please be sure to find me. We were pleased to join with St. Albans City School, we're working with students and staff, it's their 50th anniversary. They're actually working on a documentary. So the students were able to come here, go through the archives and collections of the museum, pull out photos, we helped them learn how to conduct interviews of community members, so they're putting together this documentary that we hope is going to come out in February. That's all about the history of the neighborhood schools, which led to the building of Town and City School. This year, we had new displays about St. Mary's, the St. Albans Giants baseball team. Next year, we're partnering with the American Legion Auxiliary on a 100th Anniversary display. I just want to share with you one quick story. Say anyone know anything about Platiners cottage cheese? So we didn't either. Somebody sent me a photo of this, and as you can see, it says manufactured in St. Albans, Vermont. We had nothing in our records, didn't know anything about it. So what did we do? We put it in the paper. We run a weekly photo feature on Saturdays in the Messenger, and we said, what do you know about Platiners? We got a phone call from the Platner family. Turns out, there were two sons, I think they're in their 80s or 90s now. So this was their father's business, it was only open for, I think, a few years. He worked at Hood, and this was his side gig, if you will, manufacturing cottage cheese. And so we were able to connect with four or five different family members, we met with them two or three times, they provided photos and stories, and they were really happy to be able to share the history of what their father had achieved with us, and it's going to be part of our Farming Franklin County display next year. We actually went out and were able to find this cottage cheese container and acquire it for the museum, so you'll get to have that piece of history in your hands next year. It was a story that could have been lost to time, something that maybe no one would have known about, the records would have disappeared, this container could have gone away, we never would have known who the Platiners were or what this business was. So to me, that really kind of encapsulates the work we do about bringing the museum out into the community and then bringing the community into the museum so that we can tell these stories and preserve them for future generations. Part of what we do here are special exhibitions. This year, we had Everywhere a Sign, which was on loan from the Vermont Historical Society. It was all about Vermont icons, symbols, and stories. We also had a World War I in America exhibit on loan from the Gilder Lehman Institute in New York City, which complemented our display about soldiers who served from St. Albans. Actually, the story is, they were in class in this building when they heard the whistles from the train yard, it was a special signal. They walked out of class, walked through Taylor Park, walked to City Hall, the only piece of uniform they had were greatcoats that were much too big for these high school boys. They put on the greatcoats, they were sworn in as soldiers, they were fighting in France within a year. So really interesting story in our community. And of course, two years ago, you might remember, we had Hamilton, an exhibit here where we talked about the musical and also the history of one of our famous founding generation. And I just want to show you a few pictures of what the Everywhere a Sign exhibit looked like. So we took elements from the Vermont Historical Society, we added our own touch. So you can see here, a hand-painted Central Vermont Railway sign, those of you familiar with Big Gulf Fall up on the hill, of course, the radar base, the Governor Smith Inn, and then the American House. And those are what some of the, sorry, what some of the panels look like. And the very last story I'll share with you, again, because I recognize the dessert is right there, is the story of the Congo. right there, is the story of the Conger Sabre, more commonly called the Conger Sword. So those of you familiar with the story of the St. Albans Raid know that Captain George Conger, who was a Civil War veteran, who had retired back near St. Albans to be on his farm, he thought he was done with the war in 1864, he was helping take care of his wife who was ill, finds himself on Main Street when the Confederate soldiers rob the three banks, take hostages, and make their way out of town in the St. Albans Raid in October 1864. Conger manages to escape, rallies a posse of soldiers going against orders that eventually came down from Lincoln. He chases them through Sheldon, all the way to the Canadian border into Canada, and makes some arrests. So he's this local farmer, he was a railroad worker, he was a land speculator, became a Civil War hero, and then of course, became the hero of the St. Albans Raid. He was gifted a sword by his men as a sign of their respect and devotion to him. And in fact, one of the unique elements of that story is it was paid for by all the soldiers in the unit that he commanded. Normally, officers were the only ones who could afford these types of gifts. Every man in his unit made sure to donate so that they could say they together paid for this sword to pay tribute to Captain Conger. It was part of the Conger family, passed down for generations, unfortunately went missing for a period of 15 years. It was found within the last year, brought back to St. Albans, and is now part of the collections of the St. Albans Museum. So again, a piece of local history, a piece of national history that went missing, that we're so fortunate we were able to have brought back to our community and will now be preserved here for generations to come. So another example of the way history sort of weaves in and out, not only of this building, but within our community. And it's something we feel strongly about. We're in the midst of a strategic planning process, and we do hope that over the next five to 10 years, we can continue to develop these types of programs to encourage further engagement with the community. We're always looking for volunteers, we're always looking for people who are willing to support what we do, so that I can continue to come back year after year and share with you these amazing examples of how we're able to preserve our local history. I appreciate the time, I went a bit longer than I intended, so thank you for your attention.[1226.66][1226.66][applause]
Thank you, Alex. I for one was not aware of the breadth of things that are occurring here in the museum and by the museum staff and volunteers. Next item on our agenda is, can't forget your phone, is our recognition of board and staff. And first, I'll go through a recognition of a few events, and then I think there's a short film that was put together that should be a bit of fun. First, I would like to, it wasn't put on the paper here, but I would like to recognize Catherine, really is an anchor of the organization, does a fantastic job. As a new chairman, I really appreciate the guidance and help that she provides. It's great from my side, I'm sure from her side, she's saying, "Oh, no, not again." But every few years, she has to start over with an inexperienced chair. First, I'll just go through some members of the board that have five-year anniversaries on the board, and thank you to Amy for doing the research and pulling this together. Terry Tatro is the senior guy, has been with the board for 35 years.[1343.83][1343.83][applause] Laz Skangus for 20 years. Colleen Stein for 15 years. Sylvia Jensen for 10 years. Luana Brown for five years. Ross Lavoy for five years. And Alvin Vogel for five years. One of the signs of a healthy organization is the length of time that staff stays with you. Unfortunately, talented people sometimes leave, but you also have new talent that comes in, and you have people who stay with you a long time. And so I'll quickly go through the staff as well. Amy Adams has been with us for 15 years. Greta Brunswick for 15 years. Amanda Holland for five years. And Sean Coleman for like, almost 20 years. He took a short hiatus and traveled afar, but 20 years for Sean. And then we do have a new member with us tonight. Hopefully, you, some of you have had a chance to meet him. I know his first name is Chico, I hope I'm getting the second name Martin correct. And he is here from North Hero, so a new member of our board. Thank you, everyone. And Catherine, were you going to start a short film?
All the staff were together with Catherine to put this video together, essentially renting a school concert tonight, but she pulled it all together with all the input from staff.
Thank you for putting that together. I have a couple of things, and then George had something he wanted to say. Right after we adjourn, there is dessert there that's ready to be eaten, so please have a dessert, sit down, and visit with your colleagues and friends a bit longer, if you can. And also, if you're a commissioner member and you did not get a chance to sign the sheet there, please sign it on your way out. Any other announcements from board members?
George was approached last night, actually, both the Select Board and the Planning Board, Norwich Solar Technologies, some of the things come with the trick, I think, right? They're asking for both the Planning Board and the Select Board for a letter of recommendation for a 15-kilowatt solar array. It's on Route 7, just across the street from East Hudson Church. It'd be 4,000 panels. It would be quite a which-out. The guy actually went and sent us a letter of application for it, so we'll be getting
Thank you, George. Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up? Greta?
If anyone uses the Mississauga Valley Rail Trail, the Vital Village Master Planning Project is looking, is doing a quick survey. It's online, and it's right at the front of the door here. So on your way out, it only takes a minute. They would appreciate your input.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not even asking for the second half.[1797.87][1797.87][laughter]